I'm going to call this meeting the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to join me in a salute to the class. College allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on a subject that's not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. Please state your name and if you have any written material, you can give it to the president.
Thank you, Happy New Year. My name is Patty M. Rodler, I'm from Rockford, in Gloucester, Mass. Don't make my pictures proper, hopefully. Okay. Joseph was born to Mary and Joseph Mayles. There's Mary and there's Joseph. On October 4th, 1899, in Gloucester, Mass. He grew up right around the corner from the field that bears his name. He laughed and he played and enjoyed his childhood with his siblings that are pictured here. Growing up in a patriotic family, he longed for the time he could serve his country. At the age of 16, with his mother's blessing, he enlisted in the Army. He chose the Army for his love of animals, but two, he wanted to serve as a soldier of the Battery A 50th United States Field Artillery. He fought alongside his fellow soldiers. One month before Joseph's death, his family received his journal in the mail. It had a bullet hole in it and they felt the worst had happened, and it did. Joseph was killed October 5th, 1918, one day after his 19th birthday. One of the youngest Gloucester men to lose his life in the war. In 1934, Ward Two counselors and members of the Gloucester Paternity Club asked for federal money from the ERA, Federal Emergency Relief Administration, to make Mayles Field playable for baseball. They were awarded $969 for labor, $350 for materials, a field was born. In 1935, our ward residents urged our city to dedicate Mayles Field for a playground recreation area for all to enjoy. His family was proud and lights were installed around the pond. Wait a minute. And skating in the day and at night was enjoyed. Many marriages were fought, skating on Webster's Pond. In the 1950s, as more schools were needed, Joseph's family watched as they took a portion of his field for veteran school. Fast forward to today, and our city wants to take the rest of his dedicated field and destroy what is left. This family has sacrificed enough. Please leave his dedicated field alone. Please save Mayles Field. Thank you. Thank you for your time. (applause). Joseph.
Anyone else? I apologize. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you all for coming out. I especially appreciate your passion on this subject. So council members, thank you for volunteering to do your job. I realize that nobody is doing anything for you. This is a job that you do for the greater good of our community. For those of you who are not familiar with me, my name is Michael Lawrie. I am a Gloucester resident. I graduated from Gloucester High School. I have two younger kids that I hope someday will make this city their home when they are older. I'm optimistic about the future of Gloucester as it stands because of this decision about the schools. Not only am I a Gloucester resident, but I'm also an Army veteran. In 2008, I deployed with the 82nd Airborne in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, and in 2013, I deployed with the 75th Ranger Regiment in support of Operation Dawn. Along with being a veteran, I'm also a disabled combat veteran. During my time in the service, I had the immeasurable pleasure of serving with some of our country's finest individuals. What I learned, among other things from them, is that your service to your country isn't about the medals on your chest or the free dinner you get at Applebee's on Veterans' Day. Your service is about being selfless. It's a duty to one's country, one's community, and one's family. Selfless service is the backbone of every person who serves in our military. As a veteran, I make it a point to never bring up my status as a veteran in a disagreement or an argument that can pertain to military service because it takes away your ability to contradict my point of view. To do so would almost seem unpatriotic. And to be unpatriotic is something that no American wants to be. I understand that Mayles Field was dedicated to Joseph Mayles, a member of the armed forces who was killed in World War II. Having the background of serving my country and losing no less than four friends in Iraq and Afghanistan, I can tell you that the principle of selfless service is one that Joseph Mayles lived up to and one that my friends, who I lost overseas, believed in and fought for. The idea of being selfless puts the community above the individual, and that's a principle that, as a veteran, I hold dearly and try to instill in my children. The community is always stronger than the individual, and the community is more valuable than the individual. I understand that Mayles Playground, citizens have worked hard and tirelessly to raise money and contribute funds to that playground, and I applaud them for their efforts. It's also a thankless duty to help the community, and I can't say enough about that. Because at the end of the day, we're all from Gloucester, we all love this community, and we all want what's best about it. I've seen a lot of division in these meetings, on these hearings, about the nature of this argument or disagreement. My personal view as a veteran on this matter is that Joseph Mayles would put the good of the community against a few, and I believe that my friends would also feel that way. A school in our community will do a number of things. It'll help bring families into this school, into this city. It'll help better our children's education, and it will strengthen our community through these education goals that children need to ascertain. I understand the argument is that by adding space or taking away space from what is now a softball field, people are concerned that it will dishonor the memory of Joseph Mayles and his family and his sacrifice to the community, and I don't believe that to be the cause. Having reviewed the school plans, looked at the diagrams, it's clear that there's 25,000 square feet of dedicated space for playgrounds. So I'm asking the community, as a whole, to disregard their personal feelings, stop being short-sighted, and think long-term. In 10 years, what's going to happen when we need to move forward on a school and that state money is gone? We're going to have lost $20 million, $19 million, and our children are going to suffer for it. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I would like to welcome our two new school committee members, Samantha Watson and Laura Wilson. And welcome, and I hope you find this a workaholic thing.[621.12][621.12](applause). And I hope you've got your sleeves rolled up because we've got a lot to do. Recognizations? Do we have any?
Yes, I received a phone call a couple of days ago from the Superintendent Rockford and a tragedy had taken place. He asked for some assistance. He asked that social service personnel, if they could be spared, that we would send them over in order to help with the shock that the students might be experiencing. I called James, I called Lynn. Within a matter of minutes, five of our social service personnel made it over to Rockford. They were there a second day, and I just want to really give my appreciation, my unconditional appreciation, for the work that they did. Speaking of Amy Cam, Florence Johnson, Rebecca Wetter, Mary White, and Cheryl Wason, two from the high school, three from the middle school, and it was exceptional and extraordinary. Thank you for your response and for the work that they did as well.[685.12][685.12](applause).
Any other recognitions? I would just like to say that the inauguration, the whole ceremony was, I think, probably the best one I've ever been to.
I danced very well, Donna.
You danced quite well and sang a little, but I would also like to point out that the Doc side has once again made Gloucester High School very proud for the performance that they've put on.
ROTC.
ROTC, excuse me.
We always have the cadets, the ROTC, and the Doc side is always supporting community events and when needed.
Student Advisory Council.
So we have Gloucester Offly boards that'll be ready in two weeks, and we'll bring some order forms next week, so if anyone wants to buy one, we'll be there. It's $25 a board. NHL tutoring's been really successful. We have someone sitting after every day and especially like leading up to midterms. And then Gloucester Youth Council set up a free food locker, one in classrooms on the first floor, and it's been going for a couple of weeks. Yep, and then also we had a blood drive about a month ago, and we reached our goal of 38 pints.
That was a good one.[769.12][769.12](applause). Questions?
That Gloucester Offly, you talked about, sounds pretty interesting. Could you explain a little further what that is?
Yeah, so we had companies from Gloucester sponsoring the board, and it's a non-fully board Gloucester-themed, and we have different businesses from Gloucester on the board, so we're excited about it, and it's going to fund the classroom.
So you're going to be able to buy the building soon to?
Yep. Yep, it definitely is for different Gloucesters.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
As always, you're welcome to sit.[806.12][806.12](laughter). The consent agenda, are there any items that we would like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Can I know the trip to Spain?
Okay. And anything else? Okay, the issue with the trip to Spain.
I was just looking at it, I know the trip is a year from April. I see there's 35 students, I think with two chaperones. I would just want to see or review it again before April to make sure there's enough chaperones per kids, that's all. I don't want to approve it tonight and then that'd be the end of it. So if they can just come back to us again at some point.
That shouldn't be a problem. We can probably get Celeste to explain the trip in the next meeting.
Shall we go to Spain?
Well, we might have some volunteers. I think that'll pay the way.
So my only issue with that is, one of the reasons we approved this trip so far in advance is it's an expensive trip, we need to fundraise, and I'd be really disappointed if we approved it tonight with this asterisk and then children began fundraising, children began saving, making plans, making passports, and then they came back and we didn't approve it. This thing's, you know, taken away from hopeful students, and the reason we approved it so far in advance. So rather than push it out until close to departure, I'd rather get the information that Melissa would like really soon so we can approve it and kind of close the book on it.
Well, we are having a meeting a week from tonight.
I said it was the next month, so it's not like...
Okay, well, we're going to meet in two weeks.
Right, and then wait a year and then come back closer when they leave, or rather just...
We'll try to get this resolved by our next regular meeting.
Is someone here from the trip?
From the trip?
Yeah.
Anybody here going to Spain?
No. I didn't want to teach them.
No. Anybody want to go to Spain?
I do. Send me away. And I'm not saying that I wouldn't, I just want to make sure that we get to review it because it's not for a year and a couple of months away, that's all.
I don't think it's a problem. We'll put it off for two weeks. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Soaked.
As a matter of fact.
As a matter of fact.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, and we will move on to our deliberations on educational issues. And first up, who's the turnaround plan for Gloucester High School, and Principal Cook is here, and there is a packet in your, there's a lot of information in your packet as well as the turnaround plan.
Thank you for having me back. I was here in September to lay out what was ahead for us over the first year of the plan, and so tonight I'm here to give an update with some benchmark data, first some of the things we've done, some of the benchmark data we've taken as part of the plan, and then what is to come for the rest of this year. So, in the next slide, let's see that. I want to reiterate, as I did when I was here in September, the sense of urgency among the faculty and staff at the high school, this understanding of what needs to happen and a real will, a shared understanding built on the idea of collective efficacy, that when we go into something like this as a team rather than as individuals, we have to build a sense of trust that not only are changes being made in my classroom, not only are best practices being used in my classroom, but they're also being used down the hall, around the corner, up the stairs, and so on, so that together we're not in it alone bearing the burden. And that sense of urgency and that sense of collective endeavor has really guided the whole thing, continues to have that sense of urgency. This is just an overview of what you'll see. I'm going to share some of the accountability data that we had not yet received when I last presented to you, and then I'm going to move into each of the focus areas of the plan, and for each of the three focus areas, I'll talk about what actions we've completed, what benchmark data we've collected, and whether we met those benchmarks or whether we need to do some work in meeting the benchmarks, and then what are our next steps. So, can we control the accountability? So, school committee members will be familiar with the school and district profile pages that Desi keeps, and this is the accountability tab there, so this is all public for anybody who wants to take a closer look at any aspect of the accountability data. So you'll see that last year our accountability percentile was 10, this year it's 15. Last year, we had met in terms of the total points possible 14% in our annual criteria and reference target percentage, that's 2018. Based on the data from last school year, including MCAS data, we met 73% of those targets, which doesn't mean that we, all our students are proficient, doesn't mean at all that everything is great, it just means that we are meeting many more of the goals of progress. We'll have goals for this year as well, and we hope to increase our percentage of meeting those goals. That's really what the plan is built around. If we look a little bit lower, I might spend a lot of time on this, there's a lot of detail in these plans, but I just want to point out where information is for folks who do want to dig deeper. The improvement targets are broken down into areas of achievement, English, math, and science MCAS, growth, the growth on the English MCAS and the math MCAS, high school completion data, including students who graduate in four years with their cohort, students who persevere beyond four years and graduate, and then the annual dropout rate. And you can see that in meeting our goals of achievement, we, for all students, earned 12 of 12 possible points for achievement and 11 of 12 possible points for the lowest performing students, for example. There's a progress toward obtaining English language proficiency for our English language learners. We did not meet our goal there. We did meet at the previous year. We just finished, we're just wrapping up that testing right now for next year's data. And then there are two additional indicators. One is chronic absenteeism, and the other is advanced coursework completion, that is AP coursework completion, and we did not meet our goals in either of those areas. But we did make, as I said, gains of achievement in growth overall, was an improvement, and high school completion.
James, could you just put a time reference on that?
Sure.
When did we meet these, you know, where...
So it's based...
On the snapshot, oh.
Yep, this is all based on data that was gathered in the 2018, 2019 school year. So the MCAS data from that year, the four-year cohort graduation rate from that year, the chronic absenteeism from last year.
So it's last year.
Yep, exactly. What I'm going to show you in a little bit, Jonathan, is like the benchmark data we've been doing through this year. So we're tracking like month by month or term by term, you know, how are we doing? So instead of just seeing it at the end of the year, how are we doing along the way? MCAS data, we can't, we've given many MCASs along the way, but we came up with some equivalents for it as best we can. All right, so there's more here. You can also break this down into various cohort groups, right? You can see different subpopulations for folks who are interested in digging in more, and I'd be happy to come back and talk about that depth at another time as well. Any other questions about the kind of accountability data? Because this is what triggers the turnaround plan. Okay, so back to the presentation here. In the next slide, I just wanted to give a sense of, again, in meeting our goals, that's really what, the darker blue is 2019, which is last year's goals. This is really about our progress toward meeting goals. This isn't absolute student achievement, this is just our progress in, are we, you know, we're looking to improve each year, and this is telling us.
I'm sorry I triggered when you asked for the question, but I think it's important as you're explaining to us and explaining to the public, one of the things, piece of feedback that I hear, even one of my first thoughts was, you know, well geez, you know, five years ago we were a Tier One, that's without a turnaround plan. And my understanding, well, I almost my understanding, but what I'd like to ask you is, how much of that change is due to actual decline in performance and how much of that is due to the way in which performance is measured, in your opinion?
Well, at the last, in September, I showed how some of the issues, particularly with student growth in high means groups, English language learners, special education students, economically disadvantaged students, the emphasis on the lowest performing students, that some of those challenges were there even when we were Level One and Level Two school. They just weren't weighted as heavily. So the issues were there and being addressed by the school, you know, at the time as an English teacher, you know, I was in there, we were working hard on the growth for those particular students, and now that comes to the more of the forefront in how it's been measured. So some of the issues were there at that time as well, and I had a graph, if you go back to that, that showed where it kind of read where some of those things were even in the past. So now that's coming to the fore, and as I said, beginning, good that it is because it gives us a sense of urgency, it gives us the support of the community in making the changes we need to make, but does that answer your...
Yeah, I guess, you know, I think there's a perception out there that things are radically different inside the school than they were five years ago, or that's the case.
No, no, I wouldn't say that's the case. It's just that the emphasis and the urgency are there now because of the new accountability data.
I think all students, and the second column has to do with the students who are the lowest 20th percentile, and they almost have equal weight on the chart that James had showed you before. So there is a dramatic shift, and as James also has reinforced, it doesn't mean that the issues weren't there before and that they're there now, but the way most things are measured can highlight that, and that's the challenge.
Good, I'd just like to clarify something, mostly for the audience, I think everybody here understands, but when MCAS was first put in, it was basically just where you scored. In other words, communities that were, that had good child support and they did well and they scored in the 90s into the 100s, and communities that had greater challenges scored lower. And I was involved and other people were involved in going to the state and trying to say, hold it, you shouldn't be measuring us by where we are, you should be measuring us how we advance. So eventually that became the norm. In other words, so if you were in the 10th percentile but you rose to the 15th percentile, you were doing very well because you had, you know, increased your, you'd taken what you had and made it much better, whereas if you're in the 90th percentile and you stayed in the 90th percentile, you hadn't increased your things. So they started measuring it that way. So they would set a goal, and the goal would be a couple percent higher, and that's when Gloucester became a Level One high school because we were making gains that were greater than what the, that were dictated by the state. And then they decided to go to this system, which is far more expansive and has far more subgroups, and so it isn't that, as James said, nothing, we're still more or less where we've been, they're just measuring it differently.
And I will say that the data, so the data from the year, right, from 2017, 2018 was lower than if you look at sort of trends, right? It was anomalous for the trends. Even now that we have the year after, we went back up again, right? We met our targets of those places. So yes, we had, and we've talked about other areas where we've had years, right, where that particular cohort has some struggles in there, so that doesn't, all of that is context and understanding of the data, none of it changes the urgency of the plan and like the things we know that we need to improve, and that's something that I'd like to talk about further in the next slide, as we get to the plan. So with information that we have from what you just looked at, right, the data that we had prior to this year, and then the, having a visit from NIESC, a accreditation group, as well as later in the year from Schoolworks, and then having a group of teachers on the instructional leadership team, the program leaders with administrators getting together with a facilitator, looking at all the data, there are three main areas that we know we need to work on, and these have been three areas that we've wanted to work on for a while, and this has really given the, again, the sense of urgency behind these areas. There are things we have been working on, but not with this intensity that we now have, and that is to use common instructional practices to engage and support all students in higher-order thinking. It can also take the form of inquiry, problem solving, especially in college preparation classes, so not just in the AP classes, not just in the honors classes, but in our college preps, whether it's CP1, CP2, in those classes as well, that all classes have that higher-order thinking going on in them. And what we need to do that, obviously, is we need to provide some support, to build some scaffolding in, to help students do that higher-order thinking, and then as they progress to high school, remove the scaffolding so they can be independent with these problem-solving skills. That became a real focus, and doing, and making sure that every teacher in the building has the skills and support to be able to do that. has the skills and support to be able to do that. All of that doesn't matter if students aren't in the school. So that's where attendance comes in, right? We need to improve attendance at the school. And then a particular problem within the whole is making sure students are able to transition effectively from eighth to ninth grade. You know, MCAS, of course, is testing students in their 10th grade year for the most part. In science, it's testing them, most of them, in the ninth grade year. So that property, so even if we're making gains in the 11th and 12th grade, it's not going to show up as clearly on the accountability data. To really have to make sure we're maximizing that ninth grade year by improving that transition.
So can you speak a little more about that transitional role? Only because, as you alluded to, this is something that's been talked about for a long time. My entire time on the school committee is this thing about the step from eighth to ninth, you know, to your gap. So what's different this time around?
Can I wait for that part of the presentation?
Oh, maybe.
So what I'm gonna do now is I'm going to go through each of these areas, what we've done already for semester this year, what the benchmark data tells us about how we're doing, and then where we're headed. So, Joel, did you do your homework?
Well, thanks, Joe, I missed these two slides, I looked at the blue. The last two red slides are what I was asking for, my bad.
Some of the things we've been working on with engaging students and promoting higher-order thinking. So in the professional learning communities that each department has during the day and in all of the department meetings when they get together, where those are now much more focused on teaching and learning rather than other issues like logistical issues, right? Not focused on things that can be communicated in email, say. We gotta set those things into email, we gotta set those things. These meetings are about teaching and learning, improving the teaching to maximize learning. So folks have been working on analyzing and revising the assessments to make sure they're aligned with standards that kids are gonna be tested on on that MCAS. And make sure that students are having the opportunity on the assessments to do some higher-order thinking. That's not just objective, you know, knowledge and understanding sorts of questions, but to make sure that in the assessment, students are taking what they've learned and applying it in some way to some sort of problem-solving situation. Applying it to making an argument in writing classes, applying it to do some inquiry activity. So even in areas, levels where students might struggle with that kind of thinking, we have to work at that. And so folks have been working on revising the assessments. And of course, once you've revised the assessments, now you have to create the classroom activities or revise and hone and strengthen the classroom activities that support those assessments. So now that we have these, or we've honed or tweaked or added the higher-order thinking questions, how is, how are the classroom activities added, tweaked, improved, to help students succeed with the higher-order thinking? That's, of course, a long-term process. It includes scaffolding for some of our students. For example, if I'm asking the students to make an argument about the comparison of some historical event and a current event, to scaffold that for students, I might need to hint what sort of events and vocabulary they should use in that essay, right? Some kids may need some help, okay, you will want to talk about this, 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 and this. Other students may not need that scaffolding and be able to answer the question based on their knowledge. So it's the kind of thing people are working on to not remove when students struggle. Don't remove the higher-order thinking when they're removing that, but instead we're scaffolding it to help students need it and then removing that scaffolding over time. So that's some of the stuff happening during the day. Then there's all the professional development. So history and English teachers, including all the special education teachers in those two departments, have been working on something called Keys to Literacy, which is a unified approach to how do we help students improve their ability to read a text and understand it? And so again, it's a common approach. You think at the high school level that you don't maybe need to teach reading as much anymore? Well, we know that we do. We know that comprehension can just have the book out, it's like the student to read and understand. But what are the strategies a student is going to use to unpack a challenging text? That's what English history teachers have now learned in a more unified way. It's not that they posted nothings before, they certainly did, had great expertise, but now we're able to unify our practices and have a common language. We're using some diagnostic assessments to discover some gaps in students' prior learning in English and in math that we can then address with prescriptions, they call them. Students might do very specialized, individualized work to address some of the gaps they break. We've had professional development on helping students process. So we know that through asking questions, as you all do when I present, it's not just going in this direction, but you ask questions, it's how you are processing what I'm saying. Well, we need to teach students how to do that because they don't necessarily know how to process the information that they're getting. So we've introduced this concept of the dialogic classroom. Students have also been involved in critical thinking and decision-making, putting them, say, into a historical role and making a decision based on this event in history. You need to know your historical information to make that decision that they're being asked to, but it's a more active way, more higher, it's a higher-order thinking way of having students engage with the history. We've got a group looking at racism and racial equity. I would say one of the things that is different about Gloucester High School now than five years ago is we are a more diverse school. And so that is something that we're very proactive in taking into account. And then individual folks who have goals related to the school goal, if individual goals are the school goal, have professional development I work on with Greg to get folks to go out to seminars and things. So that's happening outside of the school. We've had a school-wide professional development. Again, thinking of higher-order thinking, you know, this idea of active process and what is happening in your mind as you're reading a text. So you're active, going through pages and realizing, what was it I just read? Listening to a discussion or a lecture. Making sure that within each 45-minute lesson, we're lighting their attention with some kind of activity that grabs the student's attention, gets them involved. Like they're just coming from a Spanish class and they're heading into your biology class. Something that happens in the first three minutes to grab their attention, get them ready to learn. Chunking the material, we're not talking to students for more than 12 minutes at a time. 12 minutes, that's it. And then they need an opportunity to chew on that or process it, right? Talk to appear, write down their understandings, share those understandings, get re-taught, right, anything that they may have missed. And then what are we doing at the end? Wrapping it up so that what we learned today, the objective for today is clear to everybody. And then the teacher gets information from that review that they can use to begin the next lesson. And so, and that design, night-chunk, true review, is the model of how all classes are organized. We started that professional development, had a faculty meeting in September, revisited it in the half-day in October, broke it down into some more pieces, some more focus in three different areas that teachers rotated through on November 5. And then what are the kinds of relationships we need to be building with students that make all the rest of it work? If students don't trust the teachers, have their best interests at heart. If we're not sensitive to the trauma histories that students have faced, then all this other kind of technical work isn't, it's not gonna work for students unless we're mindful of the relationship building we need to, how we're speaking with students, how we're attentive to some of the issues that may lie behind. And that's, you know, we talk a lot, and we'll be talking a lot about mental health of our students. And that is a big component of, affects the academics. And that was the focus on December 10, which you'll see in a minute, had extremely high rating from teachers of usefulness and effectiveness. So it was a really great experience. Our faculty meetings, again, instead of being, you know, about providing information to teachers that could be in an email, the faculty meetings too are focused on reinforcing elements from that professional development I just talked about. So the faculty meetings are also have elements that are very focused on teaching and learning. Again, rather than logistics and housekeeping and those sorts of things. We still have to do those things, but the real intense focus is on teaching and learning. We've also, we have a consultant, Carol Gregory, who has been supporting the PLC work, helping us, helping the professional learning communities function at a higher level. And also making sure that everything I've been talking about is understood by the evaluators. Right? So the administrators need to know everything that the teachers are learning and coordinate so that even though there are, how many of us are there? There are five of us, there are five of us? So we, to plan for the second semester and making sure we have all of this, we just met this Monday, again, to coordinate our efforts, make sure we are all on the same page and able to seek each other for support and make sure that we're providing similar feedback to teachers on what we're seeing in classes. So that's that consultant. We also, every month, have after-school school growth meetings. So as you know, contractually, there are 20 hours of after-school time at the administrative's discretion. 10 of them we use for faculty meetings, the other 10 we use for, all teachers are broken into one of these eight teams. Four of them are focused particularly on engaging students in higher-order thinking. And then you'll see the others are extremely important as well. Crisis intervention, grade nine transition, program studies, and the social motion learning team. So those are some of the things we've been doing. And then all of that has led to some benchmarks. So teachers who find PB useful for their practice, that has been at 89.2% over the three major sessions we've had, the two half-days and one full day of PB. So we've exceeded that goal a little bit. In terms of administrator observations of students engaged in learning during the lesson, where students are mostly engaged or fully in, or all students are engaged, that the actual is 92.3%, and that's administrative observation data. Here's where, again, it's our goal, so we know this is still an area of growth and we know teachers have just gotten professional development here. And we know that this was something that was noted by Schoolworks and by NIASC when they visited. So teachers effectively embedding higher-order thinking lessons based on classroom observation by administrators is at 38.5%. That's actually a little bit better than it was in the spring when Schoolworks visited the school. And we know that that is, it's gonna be an area of growth for us. So it doesn't mean that teachers aren't asking higher-order thinking questions, right? That doesn't mean, or that they're there. We're looking for that, it's, we, there's evidence that, you know, all students in that class are engaged in higher-order thinking. So again, it confirms our focus on this area as we continue to work. Teachers use student engagement strategies. Our goal was for 95% and the actual is 92.3%. To pause here for a moment, one of the things we had added a couple of years ago to our classroom observation form is checking off these particular strategies for student engagement. That became extremely useful when we were doing this work as evaluators. Teachers incorporate inquiry-rich instruction. And inquiry-rich instruction includes making connections, asking questions, investigating, constructing understandings, expressing understandings, and reflecting. And so 76.9% of teachers are using those active, inquiry-rich instruction strategies.
Can you explain why that goal was 80, about 95, the other two parts of this? 100% were expected to?
Yeah, I think it was based on the Schoolworks number, how low maybe the Schoolworks number was. I know these were all recommended by Dan French, who was our facilitator, right? And we agreed to. I think in terms of the goal, it gives us calibration. Of course, we want to see these all, you know, in that 90% range. The thing about inquiry-rich instruction is, lessons that are more, a teacher is looking for a student to show an understanding of a particular set of content, don't lend, inquiry strategies are not the best way to do that. Though even in lessons like that, you can still have students reflect on their learning, which is an inquiry strategy. Or you can have students write their own questions based on the material you're teaching, which is inquiry strategy. And those are the kinds of things teachers are doing. Even when they have a lot of vocabulary to communicate, they're still weaving in, having students write their own questions or reflecting, or maybe making a connection to prior learning from another year. And as teachers learn to do that more, that number should increase. Okay, oh, sorry.
So the actual, can you tell?
Yeah.
So it sounds like, on something like student engagement during a lesson is kind of self-reported by teachers?
Oh, no, 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 these are all observed by, through the observation process by administrators.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Thank you.
All of these words here, I think Joel gave me some advice to make my presentations more readable, so I simplified the language a little bit. I know I use words a lot. So I cut out some of that.
We like words.
Okay. So all of this correlates to the, I know Stephanie shared the report, he acted on again. All of these items correlate to the plan, which has more of the full language. Okay, next slide. PLC meetings address effective teaching practices. So this means that when teachers get together as part of their three out of seven, we have a seven-day cycle, right, three out of the seven days, they need the PLCs. When they do that, 98.7% of the time, they are addressing effective teaching practices during that time. That is self-reported. But what we did is we created a standardized form, a Google form, to make it easy to collect data, where at every meeting, all the PLCs will say what they worked on. And they'll also do some assessing, like how did we do on this? How focused were we, how much progress did we make in that sort of thing? So that is a, you know, a major change and improvement. We also visit, evaluators, the administrator also visits PLCs regularly. And we have a consultant as well who helps with that. The number of referrals to special education, we were looking for that decline to show that we're doing, that we're able to support all learners, right? That's why that number falls in this category. And in the period of time of term one, the last two years, we had eight new referrals during that time. So we did not meet our goal to reduce the total number of referrals by 25%. You'll see when I, excuse me, later, there are some things we've done to offer support outside of special education. And I'll talk about that more around the ninth grade. So what are we working on next? Last year, a peer observation team met at monthly, more or less through the year last year, did some peer observations. And we're just, we decided to retool that peer observation group and expand it to involve the entire faculty, right? So what this is, is peers who will use a template that is just one page, front and back, that will allow them to give feedback to peers on lesson design, that the professional development has been about, on higher-order thinking, on those inquiry elements that we were just talking about. And then on any self-identified area of improvement as a teacher. I really like to work on making sure I'm calling in students equitably, right? I really wanna work on what happens when we transition from a whole class to small group work? Kids actually doing the work in the small groups, it can't be everywhere. Can you take a look at that for me? That, those are the kinds of things a teacher might have as a self-identified improvement for the teacher. So we're launching this in January, making this tool available for all teachers. And then the program leaders will be arranging the time for the teachers to observe each other and offer this feedback. So what we're thinking is we're able, through the observation process, that's part of evaluation, to offer feedback. And that's one of the things that we've really emphasized this year, is doing that regularly, making sure we're more coordinated among the evaluators. The teachers need to talk about their specific teaching and learning more often. And this provides a platform to do it more often in a non-evaluative context. That's one of the things we'll be doing the second half of the year. And then we'll be continuing with all the elements that I laid out at the beginning, none of it goes away. So all, so that ignite-chunk, true review, the understanding of higher-order thinking and how to scaffold higher-order thinking, how to help students process what they're learning through dialogic means and other ways of processing. We're gonna keep We're gonna keep coming back and refining those same ideas, not introducing new ideas, because we know what things are that work, we're seeing growth in what works, here's a doing great work already. So now it's all about building and refining and getting better at this, and expecting the results to improve as a result. All right, so we, this gives you a little bit more detail around, say, continuing with the key to literacy at the next PD. The partners would deeper into that brain-based lesson design, promote higher-order thinking. And then the culmination is, by that point, teachers, at the end of the year, teachers will have, so gain some expertise in particular areas. So we'll be having teacher-led workshops on specific issues, more narrow areas of interest within this idea of engaging students and promoting higher-order thinking. So for example, like, what does that look like in an art classroom, particularly, might be a more specialized area? What does that look like for students who really struggle with writing? It's hard sometimes to get their higher-order thinking, when they have a hard time writing things out, so what are some of the ways of doing that out loud with students who struggle with the writing? Those are some of the specific issues within the larger issue that we'll be addressing in our, so they're really celebrating the work we've been doing this year, and the expertise we gained. All right, so the next area, as we talked about, is attendance. So these are some of the things we've done to address attendance. As you know, the institute did a positive alternative consequences and education program, so this, so setting students out, school suspensions, we've been able to reduce that greatly, we'll see in a minute. And instead, students are staying in school, we, they've worked with the PACE teacher to address underlying issues, and they continue to make progress in their classes, but are separated out as a consequence from the larger community. This has been extremely effective this year, it's a great success. Parent communication, school messenger, meet-the-teacher night, all occasions with parents. I'll be sending something out this week, or the beginning of next week, just reinforcing the importance of attending school, and kind of what that looks like, how that's a truly important approach to mid-year exams and the end of the semester, and so on. Student behavior referral forms, the reason those are included here is we want, we wanted to know, we didn't have data before about how often a student is sent out of a class, right? Because that's all, that was an attendance issue, they're in school, but their behavior's disruptive, and they're sent out of the class. So we want them to have a better sense of like, how much time is being missed by students, and what kind of interventions can we put in to keep kids in class. Greening students before school, between periods, it's not that this wasn't something that was done before, it's not something to be emphasized, greening students, having them feel welcome in the building, you know, also helps make sure kids get in class on time, grow in the hall, right, strengthen, you know, get them in class on time. We added a small block support class. So what this means is, a student with an IEP in which they have a social-emotional disability may need the adjustment counselor, right? So at this moment, that person is occupied, the health center, and the adjustment counselor right there, occupied. So where's the student go? Well, each block of the day, we have a slightly, somewhat smaller academic support class with a special education teacher who's working with students as usual. But the class is small enough that that, the student, instead of just hanging out halls, or, you know, who knows what may happen if they're in need and somebody's occupied, that they go to the small block support class. And that has been very helpful in keeping students engaged. Our bridge program, you'll remember, is about re-engaging absent students, we had that in place previously, but of course, it's extremely useful, extremely helpful introducing, getting students back in, in school, who've been out for a while. And then Gail Avery, our attendance supervisor, I'm mistaken, we're officer here, our attendance supervisor, has been just an unbelievable asset to the team since she was hired. So that we're working now on team interventions and incentives that she can lead, that she can really focus on the attendance aspects of those interventions, and then incentives for students to come to school. So that's what we're working on for attendance. And then, this is some of the data. So we were, promptly absent students last year, twenty-eight point seven percent, which means they had ten or more absences, uh, sorry, eight, ten percent or more, it would be eighteen absences over one hundred and eighty days. This year, so far, it's twenty-two point three percent. Our goal was a decline of twenty percent, and somehow the math works out that, that the decline is twenty-two point three percent of twenty-eight point seven. It was magic, I checked that several times, only kind of got that, we did. So the goal for teacher attendance, because of course, also, students can be there, but teachers need to be there too. So the team, back in the spring, as one of the benchmarks, the teacher attendance should be one of the benchmarks, and teacher attendance, the goal was for ninety-five percent or higher throughout the school year. And you can see that the attendance has been ninety-five percent or higher in two of the months, and in all four of the months, the teacher attendance has improved over the prior year. And we know, and the team recognizes as part of the urgency, and the school recognizes how important teacher attendance is to the term-long plan. Now we can get to the suspension numbers. So this is the percentage of students in the school who are suspended out of school. So you see that each month, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, that was here, in every month, we've had a significant decline in the number of students suspended out of school, and we, as you see, we've exceeded the goal in each of the areas. Of course, having the PACE program, we couldn't do this without having a program that allows us to engage students. So that's been very helpful, and it's great for our attendance. Not a question?
No, 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 yeah, no, yeah.
Okay. Percentage of students who are tardy, we also thought, you know, if the student's tardy, that tardiness may mean they missed an entire class, and so in that class, they have just that day, right? And so this has been much more uneven, and is one of the things that the team wants to look at, focusing on some ways to get some consistent improvement in tardy data. As you can see, we're fluctuating here, and some decline, some increase, some increase, a slight decline in December. So we know this is a definite issue that we need to tackle, and we need to come up with some new ideas to tackle the tardiness issue. This is dismissals, so you got the, tardiness on one end of the day, and the dismissals at the other end of the day, and we, I don't understand October yet, we actually had an increase, and it was Friday, where the increase was for dismissal, so you can, you know, but why is it that day really in October more than the other months? I'm not sure yet, we can take a closer look at that data. As you can see, there's a lot of data to gather for this, and so now we're doing some of the analysis. All right. This is that, I was talking about earlier, with this office referrals. So now, last year, we, our goal was, eventually, we wanna be able to have the number we get as a baseline decline by twenty-five percent. But this isn't data that we collected previously, never collected it before, we didn't have instruments to collect it. So now that we have an instrument to collect data in our discipline referral forms, we'll be looking for that decline. I will say, however, that based on the forms, in the first part of the year, we've had sixty-seven removals from class, which is point one percent of what's called membership days, which is the total number of students times the total number of days, right? So each day, a student has an opportunity to be removed from class, right? And only on point one percent of those days is a student actually removed from class.
It's interesting even how high the suspension numbers used to be, that's a few are going to grow.
Yeah, well, we don't, so removal would be, if the teacher, this is based on a teacher having a student sent out of the class. So if something happens, you know, suspendable, vaping, for example, right, something like that, right, is the administrator going and having the person removed? So that wouldn't show up again, that's teacher sent, that's teacher. So next steps, analyze, as you just started to talk about, analyze the results, for example, tardies, what's going on there, and make some adjustments to our practices. Continue to develop the interventions and incentives with the attendance officer, that's something that's relatively new for us, and exciting work, Gail's been great. Continue to communicate to parents and the community about the importance of school-wide attendance, and then I'll be doing something either at the end of this week or beginning of next week, about the importance of attendance, particularly leading up to mid-year exams, wrapping up the semester. And then, looking ahead, we'll also be gathering, one bit of data that we haven't been able to gather is, percentage of students who are on track to graduate in four years increases by two percent as compared to semester comparisons from the year before. So obviously, we can't go that until students have passed their classes and are on track to graduate. All right, ninth grade transition, last one, I promise. Get the hook, yes.
No, 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 it's also learning for you.
The school growth team has a ninth grade focus, so one of the eight teams we have with teachers focuses on just this issue. And that, we've had that for a couple of years, but now it's intensified. New, we have extended homerooms now, students use extended homeroom time for goal-setting, progress checks, we have social-emotional learning and transition activities for students during that time, and most importantly, they relax, and they get some work done, right? We did a survey recently to students, and like, do you like the homerooms, how's it going for you? Great ratings on it, how much do you like this stuff? Eh, right, it's kind of a fifty-fifty prospect here, but how much do you like just having some time during the day to get some work done, to connect with another adult in the building who's not a teacher? Those numbers were extremely high. So that's been, this is for all students, but I think, I put it here because the effect for ninth graders is, is, it's greater. New, we also have an academic skills and practice class, which allows us to provide support to students that are not on IEP, so that's students with disabilities there. So how do we support, give a support period for ninth-grade students who may not yet have the academic skills necessary for high school? So we've added a block of that this year, we hope to expand that next year, maybe a need for some staffing for that, so that's budget, really. But that's, that's one of the things we've been able to do, it's really helpful at supporting students without having that student need to go on an IEP.
Is this something they would choose in their schedule prior to starting ninth grade?
We, well, how we did it was, we worked with the counselors at O'Malley to help identify the students, and then, and then we led students who would need it into it.
Half the semester, I mean, half the year?
At the...
Is it a half the year class?
From eighth to ninth, it is a half-year class, yeah. And so what we do also is, students may move if we discover needs, students really struggling in some area, we've been moving students in. And it's not just ninth graders, but it's primarily, the real focus is on helping with the ninth-grade transition for that class, and we'd love to expand it. Alyssa Dantonio, our new history teacher, is teaching it, she has an English certification and a social studies certification, she is excellent at this work. Student, SST team, our student study team, has marked into the calendar a review, particularly of ninth-grade data. So one of the things we did, and will do every time, progress report, report card time, is go through the list of students who are failing two or more classes, and we focus on the kids who aren't already on our May exam. So kids who are struggling, that haven't already been studied by their student study team. That meeting was one of the best SST meetings, the most recent one, the action plans, we were able to come up with, and we'll see how they did at the end of the term, how those students did. So that's been important. And then, as part of our meet-the-teacher night, we have separate session for ninth-grade parents, that was extremely well-attended and successful, and then targeted outreach to ninth-grade parents as well, you know, through the communication that I talked about before. And then, some of the other things that I mentioned before, disidentifying remediation gaps I mentioned before, the keys to literacy I mentioned before, which is particularly helpful for the ninth-grade transition, so that they have the underlying skills needed to progress in their classes. All right. All right, the percentage of ninth graders, this is the data we have so far, percentage of ninth graders failing one or more courses should decline by twenty percent, and it did, in fact, decline by twenty-five percent. The number of ninth graders failing, I mean, still too high, right? Still an issue, but this is growth here, we're looking to make improvements.
So, I apologize for not being an active reader initially, but this is the kind of what I'm curious about, is the use of this as your data point, obviously, and not good at failing class, it's a big deal, and to help, you know, right that ship. Though you're taking into account the student who's been in advanced math all through O'Malley and now is tumbling out of honors geometry because they can't seem to, you know, are those students being monitors, I feel it still has an impact on these incoming ninth graders who, you know, have been moderately or have been highly active and successful previously, and high school is just a lot harder, you know? And so I'm nervous about, you know, like, the absenteeism, looking at chronic absenteeism, but it's probably a good chunk of students who are like, more absent than they should be, but it's not hitting that alarm points, they're not being measured. I feel there might be a lot of ninth graders who are still having trouble bridging that gap, because they're not failing.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, totally, yeah, sorry. No, and I can talk about that, so the practices, we go back to like, what we're doing in response to things, those are designed to help universal, right? So, I mean, we could take data on other grades, like Cs or Ds, like, it's just, it's harder to capture what you're talking about.
Sure.
But when we are designing the actual interventions and the changes, we wanna make sure that they are addressing that problem. We'll see it in, you know, we'll certainly see it in the accountability data, because when they take the MCAS and so on, we'll see it, teachers, and that's the other thing, go back to PLCs, they are analyzing that sort of data on the common assessments. So they're looking at how are students doing on the common assessments? So history, for example, is a big push to do more embedding in the common assessments, making sure there aren't just the knowledge and understanding, who, what, when, where question, but what are you doing with that? So they're then getting together and saying like, how did our kids do on the higher-order thinking questions? Where the kid in ninth graders having trouble with the transition and this higher, higher-order thinking, the teacher's seeing that there and intervening. You're really good at the, maybe this is the stuff you're used to, and then you're struggling when you're taking the next step. You see, right? So it's not, it's hard to capture that benchmark data, though I gotta think about, it's a good question, because is there a better way to capture that with benchmark data?
Right, we just covered it in the other meeting one time.
Yeah, it is, yeah. But I hear you're saying the benchmark data is in the extreme, right, it's failing, the chronic absentee, yeah, I hear that. And that is...
I have a couple of questions. So bear with me, because I wanted to wait until the end.
Okay.
That's the questions. The first one is, can we have just an example of the lesson design for higher-order thinking that you may have been engaging in, this would be helpful for me.
Sure.
Sort of see, you know, a really good example of what's being taught.
No, that sounds good, so, I mean, I could give you a sort of example now, but I could also maybe share something with you.
Whenever.
At another time.
I'm happy with that.
Would that be something, I mean, that's, that's a very good idea to do anyway.
Yeah.
Right? And so that way, everybody could see an actual example, instead of my observa, you know, my telling of it from observant.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
So if, sort of the goal is for students to engage in higher-order thinking, my assumption is that maybe in other grades, right, we should be doing things to sort of support that, right, not just start in high school? So is there sort of a collaboration between grades?
Yes, that's what I started, that's what we're...
That's starting in like kindergarten?
We're working with School Works.
I was curious.
In terms of, you know, sort of working on this, because they have their plan, and so we actually do the, when I'm, when we're doing a conference call with the state, giving feedback to what I'm doing and my plan, that, Lynn's also there.
Right.
That we're there together, because they're giving that advice as well, and Greg's in the room. So we're talking about the plan, and I think even, I mentioned in the slide, coming up, that coordination was spoken about. So we're very much on the same page, and we've also used each other's PD. So the PD that I talked about before, Lynn has shared what she's been doing, and I've shared what, you know, what I've been doing. And Greg is, we're collaborating all with Greg to coordinate that. So yes, it's... So yes, it's very much on our minds. And then, especially because this is one of our focal areas, is that transition. So we can do the things at the high school. And then with Lynn and her staff and the teachers at O'Malley, we're working on what does it look like from there? And that will support us, so, yeah.
I have two more questions.
Sure.
In one of the slides, it said that there was a ninety-three point nine percent, I guess it was a teacher report of useful practice for a PD. And I think that that was referring to the creating relationships.
Yes.
So I guess with the usefulness of that being so high, that speaks to me as to something that's needed and to continue. Do you guys have plans to continue sort of a focus on relationship building, trauma, mental health?
Yes, I would, I could, I should have given that as one of the examples of March third.
Okay.
Right, of where we're gonna pour in and break down into some repeding higher. Because we definitely have a trauma sensitive schools. We had three different teams. So how we did PD that day is also part of what made it work. So now the teachers have these kind of basics of the, the night chump chew review process, understanding the focus of higher order thinking. We all together have gone through some foundational. What we did in the PD that day is we did a giant jigsaw. So we took all these concepts of relationship building and divided the staff up into teams. So this, 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 this. They did some in-depth study. They came up with the talking points. What does everyone in the school need to know about that you studied? And then we brought it all back together and came up with the list of like, things we all need to know and do. And I think teachers really liked using, being experts that way, sharing expertise with each other, getting involved with multiple departments, not just the people they usually work with. And so it was the topic and the way that the topic was approached had a very high sense. And a lot of people want to continue. The other place that work continues is in the school growth teams as well.
Additionally, we had Emily Wilson from Full Frame Consulting do a full day at the middle school this past November, pre-K through eight. We were all together in the same building, as well as the high school area professionals. And it was one of the most highly rated sessions, presenters we had of all of the presenters. Next November, we'll all be together, pre-K through twelve, in the same building. And we've already booked the same presenter for a full day. So that the high school teachers can have access to that same train. And you've also done a lot of work in the past as well.
I just have one more, sorry. The attendance, so the analysis, I'm assuming that this is true, but is there sort of a social emotional aspect to that analysis?
So that, I mean, so think a little bit more about the work that the attendance supervisor has been doing. A lot of what we've been doing is looking at those issues. What are the impediments?
Right.
Naming, and that they're different for different students.
Right.
And then, our intervention is going to be different for different students because of the reason behind the attendance issue. Right, as opposed to just the attendance issue.
Yeah.
It's not all the same for all kids and not all interventions, not all incentives will work.
Same thing with tardies, right?
So exactly, right, yeah, all the parts of attendance, the absence, the tardies, yep. The tardy, there's a lot going on in mornings, as we all know from our children, small people. There's a lot that goes into that and, and, right. It's some, some of those issues are exactly what is happening to make students tardy in the morning. It's always family issues and, and so, no, that's really important part of the attendance component.
Just a, just a quick comment. The issue of, of the types of instruction that you're interested in seeing can be brought to the program subcommittee and separately for illustration so that you get a stronger sense of what is, that we're asking our teachers to unify their practice around and what's research-based and the rest.
I have a question. And the turnaround plan on specifically, it was a student-specific turnaround practice. It talked about policies, grading policies. To be specific, it said to reexamine and revise course failure policies to prevent students from giving up halfway through the school year. So I'm sure you're familiar with the language that follows. Have you done anything to address those policies? Because I didn't hear you talk about it.
Yeah, so.
Impacts absenteeism, which also goes to student growth. So I didn't hear you touch on that, and I didn't know if there's been some work done on that.
So our practice now for any sort of, you know, school-wide minimum or policy, and it's great that you mentioned this, because we were just working on this in the building before I came over here, is working with teachers are, how do we provide incentives to students who may right now have an eighteen average? Right, and is there a way to help that student get a fifty that could at least, for the term, that can at least be, if they improve and do well the next two quarters, they'll be able to pass the course? So we, what we do is we work individually, the deans and the principal and the guidance counselors, working with teachers to come up with what that looks like. So for example, one of the things it often looks like is connecting a student to a teacher to work after school to prepare to retake some important test. Something that can really show that they, they know and understand some key concepts from term one. It shows like, yeah, you got enough of that. We didn't, even though the math doesn't work out, and I give that a fifty, right? You, through that test, you have demonstrated that you have some foundational skills and foundational understandings to be able to access term two. Right, and then you're in the ballgame again. And now, your attendance, your effort in the class will be rewarded by getting that eighty term three, term four, that now, when averaged, will allow you to pass the class. So that's how we, we do it on an individual student basis, with the guidance counselor, the administrator and the teacher to figure out what it looks like in a particular situation. So then create an improvement plan for the individual student. So if you do these things, that's going to mean you will be able to pass the class.
But I think the report takes it a step further. And if they can't, are you allowing them to withdraw from the class and spend the rest of the semester in another class where they might feel they can experience?
If we determine that there are external impediments, for instance, a shift in a student's mental health situation, right, something that's happened at home or outside of school, or if they've just, before we've determined they've been displaced originally in the course.
Right.
Right? So in our policies, it allows for a course change. And in many cases, we even have the opportunity that they could do some kind of online work, particularly for the absences, if they've been absent for a long period of time, that through a bridge program, they might recoup a semester by doing one of the Plato, we use that mental Plato courses. They take that course and then they get credit, two point five credits for completing the course.
So are you saying we have the absenteeism policy, you're saying through the bridge program now, they can affect the classes?
So there are two things. So a student who is absent for a long time for say, a, a, a physical health, mental health issue, they're not subject to the, the, those are excused absences. And so they're not failing, they don't receive an attendance failure for seven or more absences.
Right.
So if they've returned to school with that documented mental health or physical health issue, then they reengage in their regular classes through the bridge program. But in some cases, they may have missed so much work that it's actually best for them to work in the bridge program on an online course while still attending, sort of, so you get removed, a student might be taken out of an elective and use the bridge, the Plato class to recoup first semester while remaining in their English class to get that credit for the second semester.
So you're saying the students, that makes sense, yes.
Yeah.
But the students that have the unexcused absences, they don't have a recovery?
Oh, students who have it, unexcused absences.
Unexcused, yeah.
So those are where now, we're talking about, the thing I was talking about before, which is we're working with the teacher.
Yeah.
And the, with, we're with the teacher, the counselor on what can we do to keep the student in the game?
So there's still an ability? So when I'm saying you're failing because of the absentee policy, we're gonna help you still maintain an ability to attend the class and get credit if you put some effort into it?
And attendance failure could just mean you got sixty-four.
Right.
For the term, you just failed, right? You, you had an eighty, but through the attendance failure, you have a sixty-four. You're definitely still in the game, depending on what you do in the other terms.
It can be reinstated.
It can be reinstated.
But it can be reinstated, which is, you know, absolutely, we love, that's, we, is the, call those kids, oh! I think that was a great time. When a kid goes from, you know, ten absences to three or fewer in the subsequent term and they recoup the credit, that's one of our favorite things, when that happens. We had a couple of those from, in second term from first.
Thank you.
So James, you talked about urgency right at the beginning.
Yeah.
And we should, I believe everybody on the school committee shares this sense of urgency. And we did what we could in the last year's, in this year's budget to support programs that you said. And I know you will be asking for a substantial increase in personnel and things. Is there anything that we can do immediately that would help? We are capable, I mean, if, if the absence, the policy needs to be changed, we can do that. If, if there's some sort of software support or things like that, that you need to be able to track things better, we could perhaps do that. We, we want to help.
Sure, and I understand, yeah. And I think that, you know, some, a lot of the, what you'll be hearing about is how some of these interventions, you know, will take some, some staffing. And in some areas, you'll see some curricular requests, right, for particular curriculum. I, I think that, and then some of those are definitely targeted in the areas, as method that you were talking about, the mental health areas as well, that support all of this. In terms of immediate, you know, sort of policy changes, our, our, our attendance policy in its, overall, in its approach, allows us the flexibility that we need for the situations I was just talking about with Melissa, while still holding a bar for students. It's still encouraging the daily attendance. So I don't think it needs any kind of major overhaul. In terms of any smaller asks, you know, really to this point, we've, it's been a lot of professional development consultants and so on. And working with Greg, we've been able to find through grants and in different areas, how to fund those things to this point. So there's not a particular professional development need. So that's really where I think it would be. That's where I have asked Greg for some things during the year, but he's been able to, within this budget, find that money and within grant funding, find those areas. But I, I very much appreciate the offer and I'm always thinking of those things that can improve, even if, even if the price tag comes with them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, I was very informed. And now, we have the school meeting.
So I have many fewer things to share, you know, we're just at the onset of planning. So I have to note, thank you to James and to Greg for, these are footsteps that anyone wants to follow, but I have some wonderful footsteps to follow, because you can see the work that they've got in place and the progress they've already made in a short period of time. One of the biggest things they came across and they're learning is the site visit from School Works being one of the primary impact pieces for them and getting on board early. So with Greg's assistance, we were able to reach out and get in touch with the state team, the statewide system of support personnel and have them come meet with us mid-fall and get started. So that we were able to actually start our planning and hold our first instructional leadership team meeting December twelfth before break. This is like, was that?
We were the first one on the state team.
I didn't know that part, okay. So, so being proactive about that is really gonna help us get some things in place. Even so, we're still on a similar timeline that the high school was last year, where the end of the year is our target date to have our plan constructed and then implementation next year. We'll be able to do that in a very thoughtful manner. So we, we have our team formulated, members are listed there below, I'll talk a little bit about that. We, I, I really am getting a lot from the staff, from the state, who's coming to meet with us. So they're coming and helping us craft these initial instructional leadership team meetings. But also, I'm a leadership assistant that comes and meets with me to take a look at behind the scenes as administrators, how we're approaching, myself and the two assistant principals, approaching how we support teachers, instruction, et cetera. And then they're, they're invested in our planning meetings. So the LT meetings are scheduled for bi-weekly throughout the course of the year. The team I have on board is, I tried to pull members from, there's a matter of facets. But we focus primarily on people who've been involved in different initiatives that we already have begun. And there's a reason for that, and I'll talk about in a minute. So you see, there's all these acronyms next to people's names have meaning. So we, for example, we have the administrative team, counselor, Alison Als, who's a Safe and Support Schools initiative that we started work last year. Jen McKay is involved in everything, in addition to being a social studies teacher. She's been involved in our multi-tiered system of support work that we implemented some parts of this year. She's also on our Universal Design for Learning team, which is, goes back to what James was talking about, about research-based best practices. We have a math teacher who's, who's done a lot of, and continues to do a lot of project-based learning in seventh grade and is also on the GTA negotiations team. Iris Miller, our special ed program leader, who I didn't put up here, she, the EM, just executive function. She crafted, facilitated her team this summer to design executive function curriculum that the special ed teachers are working on perfecting so it then can be implemented to classrooms. And it's, it's all about the academic skills and organization of the brain and the, and the work that kids need to do to be learners. So that will be not just special ed, but it will, it should be, you know, the development skill set for all learners. Second special ed person is Kathy Antarante. She's one of our special ed teachers and is also one of our GTMFs. Leslie Sellers, our performing arts teacher. She's a representative for specialist classes overall, because though we get scored in academics, all of the performing arts, arts, music, et cetera, all of the critical thinking that kids need to, to apply to other areas is, is necessary and demonstrated in those academic, those subject areas as well, excuse me. She's also on our social emotional learning advisory curriculum development, which we've done a lot of work with this year. And Hannah Sargent is our brand new ELL teacher. Although last year, our ELL students performed quite well as compared to our high needs, et cetera. We have had an influx, a greater number of kids are with us. And the kids struggling, they, they, some of them will fall into the category of both English language learners and special education needs. So they, they may at some point straddle that fence around being part of that high needs population that needs more support. So last year, they struggled, and that's great, but we can't, we can't leave them out. There's also a strong literacy component in her skill set, which is gonna help what we've got going on. So I'm really happy about the team. Last, the last meeting that we had was really primarily about the intro to what this team is, talking about rules, et cetera, city norms. Tomorrow, we have our second meeting. The state team is bringing their data person to do a deeper dive so that our team really has a good understanding of what the data looks like. An opportunity to practice the data analysis maybe differently than they have before in a way that we'll be doing it moving forward. And so, so I guess the ball rolling on that is they learn what their role is and position is. We don't have the benefit of having been through NIASC and any of this before yet, so it's gonna be a little bit different transition for our staff into having School Works come in, which they're coming the twenty-first and twenty-second of January. And I understand I'll have an overview of their observations on the twenty-second and then a formal report shortly after that. So we'll get good information. It's, you know, it's hard for the teachers, as you can imagine, they work very hard. And to see all the work they're putting in isn't bringing our learners to fruition the way that they hope they will. So, you know, our job is to really help them see this in a positive light and welcome the information that we get, you know, and feel the urgency, because there is an urgency to help our students be more successful. So again, I said, they're, they're coming the twenty-first and twenty-second. And then our job as an ILT is to build that plan as, as we go throughout the year. So we're feeling good about those pieces. Additionally, in our initial conversations, I've gotten some really good positive indications from them. from them, that the things that we've already started to put in place are typical parts of turnaround practices. So some of the things that they noted that, you know, that's great, we would tell you to do that, but it's great, we would tell you to do that, are the things that I've got up here. So the multi-tiered system of support, we're looking at the ground level of how we approach when a kid is not doing well, you know, how can we impact the curriculum, the instruction, and the environment in the classroom, you know, what the kid brings into the classroom, we don't have control where we're necessarily, it's not that, it's not part of it, but we can only change what we can control within the school, so that's our, our focus on that. And then building more, improving our interventions to address those things. The cultural responsive teaching with the brain in mind, lesson plans, Dorada's, Hammond's, the Ignite chunk to review lesson planning process that Jane mentioned, this is where we've been swapping PD plans, and we spent a couple hours focused primarily on Ignite, what do we do when we start a lesson to engage kids and that. So that's something that, that we've already been putting in place. The UDL team has attended training this fall and they're in the process, they've practiced some lessons with universal design for learning guidelines in mind, and they're going to bring a PD to the faculty on March 3rd, that demonstrates how they've incorporated the guidelines into their lessons and give the faculty an opportunity to practice, looking at their own lesson planning and, and hopefully making them more accessible for more kids at once. The Safe and Support Schools is involved with advisory, and I think I've talked about this before, our advisory is now once per cycle as opposed to once per month. And the team worked this summer and is still working on providing lessons that incorporate resilience, different kinds of social-emotional approaches, and, and in a much deeper way than we're able to do once a month. So, so that's been going along. Every four weeks they have what we call a flex block, where it might be an assembly, it might be the houses doing some, what they call win, what I need with the students, where they, you know, sort of put the kids in groups and, you know, whatever they need to work on is what they work on, they might do a project, things like that. But that's, that's been worked on and put in place as well. And then we also have the luxury of the lovely, yeah, Avery is our attendance officer, and she's brought a wealth of experience to help us, to guide us more effectively with student attendance, whether it's working with families, navigating through the court system and with DCF. And, you know, we're, we're starting to try and do things like what we, we brought in Les Bryn, actually, it's called an FBAT, it's a functional behavior assessment for attendance, that T is at the end. But, you know, it's, it's basically, we take a look at and try to figure out what is the antecedent to attendance issue, and we're focused on absenteeism. We have a few unfortunately, very large numbers of absences of a few particular students, so we're, we're trying to focus on that, really be proactive about engaging families even who are perhaps evasive, there are letters and notifications and phone calls, and, and that's been helping quite a bit. So this is what we've got in place already, that I might feel is out there now, that we're going to continue to build on. Of course, we won't know that for sure until we get the data from School Works and data from the faculty and put that all together, and have the team take a look at constructing a plan for our direction. More to come.
Two questions. One, how many people come when they do a site visit? So you have them there for two days, three people?
Three people.
And do they go in to classroom observations?
Yes, I'm told that-
And they can get through all that?
Right, I, what I've been told is, I'm coordinating a conference call with them any day now, to give the intro of what they're going to be doing and what I need to do, and one of the things I know that I will need to do is craft a schedule for them, and they'd like to get into between seventeen and twenty classrooms, and they want to see beginnings, middles, and ends. And, you know, they tilt it toward academic classes as opposed to specialist classes, just because they're, they're looking for those classes that are directly impacting the performance areas that we have concerns with.
And my second question is, because O'Malley is an innovation school, will they help with, are there any advantages, you know, in the design of an innovation school or the autonomy that, that can get the teachers to have better buy-in or?
That's a good question.
I mean, I realize they're, you know, they're looking at, are we teaching the right thing? But can we, is there any power whatsoever with the fact that it's an innovation school to have it be, you know, just kind of a more enthusiastic reboot?
Yeah, one of the fundamental elements of the innovation schools, I think you recall, has to do with project-based learning. And project-based learning is the application of the knowledge and the information and the skills that children have been, have been given, preferably with real-life situations, and it's a very similar kind of idea that James was talking about, at his school, where kids are actively engaged in learning and using the information in order to reinforce and understand the idea. So that is a fundamental, that and the governance piece with the teacher advisory committee, and the great success at the middle school is that, particularly in science, that whole concept has flourished. The questionable part is that we were hoping for a pebble in the pond kind of situation, where we disseminate those practices to the other subject areas, and we have not experienced the extent to which that should have happened at the time.
There's certain areas that actually have, they just logistically, the two-person houses that share forty to forty-five kids are finding it much easier to carve out time and flex their time, so that they can do more project-based experiences. The teachers who are more locked in, partly because they're for different people with different subjects, but they also have more kids from sub-separate special ed programs coming in, becomes harder to flex the day and combine blocks and share kids. When you have a kid who needs to be in math in a different room, and that teacher teaches across grade levels and can't change his or her schedule, so, so there's some schedule questions that people have brought up around that in order to, to really continue to build the project-based learning experience.
So, I'm interested to hear that, because as I was saying to you speak, I was thinking, you know, potential conflict between the premise of this innovation school and the fact that now it's going to be, not only call it a heavy hand, but a heavier hand as far as, this is the way instruction needs to look, this is the way you need to organize, the way you organize yourself to provide education to these students, which I think, you know, seems to me, in concept, in conflict with the idea of innovation school that provides the teachers a little more variety, a little more autonomy, to homogenize things more than otherwise would be.
My sense was, so, a couple pieces, absolutely, it makes sense that you could reach that conclusion. The goal of the system-wide, the statewide system of support team coming in is to help us bring forward data that allows us to make the decision. So it actually is a good companion, and, you know, there are certainly, not restrictions, but, you know, our goal is to improve our performance, the outcomes are really the given and the non-negotiable, you know, and their goal is to help us bring forward best practices and support us. And like I said, I, I've been meeting with them since November, we've had a team meeting just once so far, but my meetings with them, both with the individual leadership assistant and with the other, the whole team, has been completely that, it's been very supportive, it's been, you know, listening to what we're doing, you know, guiding, but not, it hasn't felt heavy-handed. And I think that's going to be really important, because that buying piece will not happen without the feeling of, you know, I, I know what I'm doing, I'm an expert, thank you for information, help me understand how to best use it, and then make decisions about a practice at the school.
When you get the report, will we see it and get an update before the end of the school year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because I'm hoping, I was told in James' speeches with Greg, that we should have the formal report about a month or so after they come. So given, like I said, we're going to get overview, informal overview of their findings on that second day, and then-
So by March.
So we'll see, yes, not later, like the last one.
Yes, and then you'll have updates on what our team is doing with that as well, as we're building.
Sure.
I'm thrilled to have you guys on that at the middle school.
Well, I cannot deny that.
Any other questions?
Good job chunking your presentation.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. And we will move back to the agenda, and the next up is Dr. Saffio will present the superintendent's report.
I've called Dr. Saffio.
Oh, yes.
I did. I've reported out a number of times about the new state requirement for a three-year plan that addresses the difference in performance of the various subgroups. The Board of Education was supposed to meet on that and develop the fundamental principles as well as a template that would allow to districts. It was supposed to be December the seventeenth, there was a snow cancellation, so things have been postponed. There has been a meeting today of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, Italian Building Assistance, and Labor Council. And so we are waiting and hoping that the specific information and the template and the process will be finely tuned and delivered out to the districts so we can begin to work on it in earnest. But with that said, we've heard a lot tonight, particularly from the high school, and a nice overview and summary of the processes that take place at the middle school. So under difficult circumstances, we do have some advantages in that a lot of this work has been going ongoing, beginning with the NIASC plan a couple of three years ago, the self-evaluation, followed by the turnaround plan and the sustainable plan that is now in process, and of course, our district improvement plan. We have been working in a couple of these areas. For example, in the district improvement plan, we already have in place an institutional self-evaluation, which looks particularly at equal access to all programming, pre-K through twelve. We have received some student learning experience data, although it's been questionable, Greg had been working with the state to try to identify whether or not the information that they are providing us is accurate, but also it is a data measure designed to mature equity with respect to quality instruction, which students are receiving, which teachers, and how much experience are the students in the quote, lower ability grouping classes receiving teachers, by and large, who are, have only been in business for a year, or are they getting our most experienced teachers? That data is designed to give us that information. We have some discipline data, and of course, James had pointed that out, and we're looking to see whether or not, within our discipline data, particularly at the high school and the middle school, and as well as across the district, not only the numbers, but which student groups are or are not receiving consequences and to what extent. And also mentioned in James's report was the brick in review for bias and stereotyping. This whole issue of culturally responsive teaching can only be enhanced by curriculum that we know does not subliminally provide ideas, images, or what have you to various diverse students. We want that curriculum, those curriculum to support who they are and not to send out mixed messages. So we do have processes in place where faculty are looking at our curriculum to make sure that it is devoid of bias and stereotyping. And we just heard extensively and articulately about the GHS turnaround plan. There's a fellow, there's a guy, his name is John Haiti, he's a researcher, he's looked at hundreds and hundreds of, not only studies, but meta-studies, which are studies of studies, it's, it's convoluted, but the point is that he's, he's well-researched, over two-hundred-and-fifty-six different activities that can take place in schools and in the classroom. And the number one issue on the list of two-hundred-and-fifty-six as being most effective is collective efficacy. And what you have heard is what defines collective efficacy, namely taking fundamental guiding principles and unifying an entire faculty behind those guiding principles, such as effective research and structure strategies, attendance issues, social-emotional issues as well. And it does two things, one, it builds capacity, and, and secondly, it also bolsters the confidence, it's the combination of the capacity and the confidence that builds this thing called collective efficacy, and what research shows is that is what makes schools move forward. So we're cautiously confident that that kind of, those kinds of unifying principles are what are going to strengthen the, the work that takes place at the high school and middle school. He also spoke about embedding higher order thinking skills, Joel, project-based learning is, is very consistent with reinforcing the whole concept of, and we should talk about specifically what higher order thinking skills are, which is why Samantha, your questions are very helpful in that regard, the early warning intervention systems, methods of addressing the academic struggles for grade nine, and creating academic support for general education students. So, yes, we are responsible for and obligated to develop this three-year plan, all well and good, and I think we're, we're, you know, it's very important that we should do it. But we do have the raw materials already operationalized in some degree across the high school and developing the middle school, which we can use as the basis for developing that plan as well. Item number two, the PAPAN study for education case, which looks at the relationship of Rockport and Gloucester, is in, it's right in the thick of it right now. The research is from the UMass Donnu Institute, are currently doing interviews with who they refer to as key respondents, particularly the principals, guidance professors, chief financial officers, director of special education, assistant and superintendents, and asking a number of questions. They also have been combing the data at the Department of Education's website, and also the Department of Revenue. I haven't seen what they are coming up with, but they've been doing that. I know that Gaddy has submitted some budget intervention back as far as two thousand five at least, to the extent that you can. And so they are looking at a lot of historical trends, and a number of their questions dealt with the same issue. They're, they asked us about some strengths, some challenges, the effects of declining enrollment and increased possible education, and then they asked a lot about fifteen-year trends regarding extracurricular programming, extracurricular offerings, student support services, areas of growth. So they're right in the process of doing that. They asked us questions about anticipated cost and revenue trends in the next five years. We said it's either going to go up or down, and we'll see what happens. And then current steps to manage costs while sustaining educational quality. When Greg and I were interviewed, in terms of the, the number of options of curricular and extracurricular opportunities for students, we don't really say there has been a lot that has been cut or sacrificed. When we have had to make cuts, there are areas where if you're looking at an English department, you have X number of teachers and, and a student-teacher ratio of twenty to one, and then there is a reduction, that might raise the student-teacher ratio to twenty-three to one per classroom, but that doesn't mean that you've necessarily lost electives or programs or what have you. So generally speaking, there have been shifts in terms of how and where the budget has been allocated over the, over the years, but in terms of at least over the last five to ten years, the number of offerings, the types of offerings really has not diminished all that much. Thank you. So that, that report, I believe, is due sometime around by the end of March, so we'll continue to update you on the work that they're doing and any further information that we have. Of course, we'll be sharing the report with you when the time comes, because it's a pretty significant thing. Item number three, I've been frustrated for quite some time about some of the communication going out to the community. We have stipended folks in each of the buildings, publicists, who are supposed to be sending out materials, not supposed to be receiving, but information about that on a monthly basis, that hasn't worked. We now have begun, and hopefully you've had a chance to see, this document that's been going out called Positive Happenings. I've asked the principals on a bi-weekly basis to send me just a story or two, and have an opportunity to compile them, and they're sending photographs, videos, some brief descriptions of some good stuff that's happening in and around the district in each of the buildings, and we'll continue to do that and try to institutionalize that as part of our communication.
Does that mean we're not paying the stipends?
We're not going to, starting next year.
So it's still paying now, we know it's not happening?
Yes, we are.
Why?
Well, I, it's something I, that we can take a look at, I mean, if, if we have signed them up, you're, what you're saying is that to the lack of performance, they should not be paid.
There's a job description, and they've been, and they're not-
Yeah, there is, there are ones at schools where the, where that is in fact taking place, but not in the others, and your point is well taken, and if that's what- but not in the others, and your point is well taken, and if that's what we can do, then we'll do it. Quite want to check with them on me too, to make sure of this question.
We'd be glad to pass them out for a discussion.
Sure.
Can I ask you two questions?
Please.
Firstly, on Positive Happenings, I appreciate that you're doing that. Has there been any thought to putting it, to putting it out more widely?
Sure. It's on Facebook.
Oh.
The, the district does have a Facebook page.
Yes.
We are sending out on Facebook as well.
So I was on that page the last couple of days, I didn't, didn't see it.
I asked IT...
Okay.
Well over a week ago to send that out, so I'll check with them tomorrow.
I may be wrong. Back to the first, to your first section, just related to bias and stereotyping, do the people who are looking at this have any expertise in this issue? You don't, you know...
Yep, yep. Can you speak to any of the implicit bias? Not extensive experience, not the extent to which you would, you would hope, but that's a tall order for everybody who touches the materials that we're teaching in our schools. What we have done is we've utilized materials from a model program from Washington State that I had been familiar with a few years ago, and I think I shared with James a couple of years ago. And when Desi came to talk to us, there's a couple sample things, and one of them was the Washington State model that includes guidelines and checklists, and it also includes some basic information, a number of scenarios that people could look at and understand, some examples from curriculum. So, we put together a PowerPoint based on that information and a few other sources. And they, each of the principals has, you know, done that training at staff meetings. So it's, you know, it's not, as I said, it doesn't go super deep, but, you know, we've developed ourselves as many models as we could to put together, you know, to compete with the many other trainings that we have to do as well. So they have gotten baseline training. My experience was that they, also the anti-defamation, we had some really good materials for helping people look at materials and ask thought-provoking questions. So, I think it's a good start, and if we have other resources that would be helpful, I would think.
I mean, obviously implicit bias is implicit, so it's hard to...
Right. Talk about the Washington Protocol a little bit? Because the detail, what, what, the folks who have done a little bit of the work to get started, and some folks who have been pretty interested in, say on our Race and Equity team that we just created, they find that the kinds of questions that are asked, so there's the training, right, which gives people an overview of types of bias and places, how it might affect your curriculum, right? Where it really became like, using the tool is a learning experience. Exactly. We said, like, so going through the kinds of questions that that Washington Protocol has you ask and think about, then leads to a deeper understanding, so it guides you to kind of look for those areas. So it's not just like, is there bias here? Do you know what I mean? You really ask some good questions to break it down. So I would say that that has been the feedback, I don't think I've had to talk to you about it. No, I think I mentioned that the thought-provoking questions, the series of questions, my report out to James a couple of years ago, was that the questions and the discussions that happened were the best part of the entire day, and that gets to the point James was talking about where it is a learning experience itself. And just lastly, Jesse sees a lot and audits a lot of districts, and they were already pretty pleased that that's something that we had in place and we're utilizing, and felt that it was one of the stronger things that we could locate. So we're sort of thinking about the numbers right now. Our leadership team, and we're meeting tomorrow, we don't know for chapter eight of the culturally responsive teaching in the brain, and it's all designed to sensitize our administration so that as we continue this work, they can leave.
And it goes through K through 12?
It's K through 12.
Any other questions, the superintendent?
We approve the superintendent's report. We accept it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. I inadvertently skipped over item C, scheduling school committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, and workshops. School committee meetings, thank you, James, will be on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month, and that will vary through the rest of the year, with the exception of, I haven't looked at April vacation, if it falls on school vacation, we generally make a, make a change on that. It doesn't fall in February, but it does, I can, we will be, on next Wednesday, we will be having three meetings. We will have B and F at 4:30.
Four.
Four. You've got a lot to do.
Just the standard, but it usually takes us an hour.
We have, we have personnel at 5:30. We will be meeting with Dorothy Presser from MASC to work on the next steps of the superintendent's search. So we, four, 4:30?
All right, so do you?
About 4:15.
Okay.
4:15.
On time, but...
But normally, B and F would be at 5 o'clock on the third Wednesday. And then, at 7 o'clock, we're having a workshop with Dorothy Presser about the school committee protocols, policies, and procedures. When we get, at B and F on next week, we'll be discussing the schedule of starting to do the review of the budget, which will add meetings to, to B and F, and so we'll have more to report as far as when that gets discussed and figured out. But as for those of you who don't know, we, the budget process has already started. The program leaders and the principals have, department heads have submitted their budget, they've been reviewed, but what happens with B and F is they, they review every, every department and listens to their needs. And then, there will be, also be another special meeting early in April. I was just looking at the calendar, April 1st happens to be a Wednesday.
I'm not sure where you're going, but that's usually the date for the public hearing?
That's what I was going to say. So that would be an additional meeting, and it would be, coincidentally, on April 1st.
April 1st.
So that, so in April, there would be an additional, that would be the public hearing on the budget. So a couple of weeks before that, we would pass a budget for publication and, and for review of the, the community, so they could publicly comment on that.
I have a question about meetings. I think I exposed you about this before. I can tell a couple of years ago, the full committee did the budget development meetings where all members were able to question the departments that came before us, and so I wanted to have that discussion of whether we should, could go back to that, I just didn't know if it could happen at our next meeting when we discuss procedures and protocols, or if it would be something we would discuss at a different time.
I would think it'd be appropriate, because we're going to be talking about subcommittees and their roles, and, and, and we could, and, and we'll have met earlier with B and F to know what their, what the, sort of the layout of the meetings would be, so, so we could, I think we can talk about that at the workshop.
Okay.
I haven't talked to you about when you're going to have program. Traditionally, it's been what, the third Thursday?
The second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
You have to work with, with three months' time.
Okay, well, I, I would just like to say that it's, it's good to have it scheduled at a regular, regular time, so that people want to participate.
So just wondering, like, that, for instance, that April 1st public hearing is not yet on the calendar. When do those things go on the calendar?
This will, at the next B and F meeting, which is next Wednesday, we're going to talk about the budget calendar, and, and after that's settled by B and F will come forward at the next school meeting, two weeks, and, and present that.
The city calendar almost never gets anything until the meeting's generated, right?
I'm sorry?
The citywide calendar pulls things when the, when the agenda gets set typically.
But Gary, we'll need to send the budget to the newspapers, is it one week before, 10 days before?
So it's a...
10 days.
10 days.
So this is a short-term calendar?
Well, what we are looking at is the, the city's calendar, and so, because the school department, despite being a department of the city, operates its own separate website, et cetera, et cetera, our stuff seems to hang up on our website, unlike the rest of the boards and the commissions that hang up on that calendar.
But our website is not up to date.
But, but we cannot, we can have Stephanie post all the B and F meetings related to the budget as one, you know, as, as a notice to the city, so they're there, and she can always change the, the details of the agenda, you know, up to 48 hours ahead of time. So that way, at least, the meetings would be on the city calendar, and they'd be, they'd be laid out there. And if they change for one reason or another, in terms of a date or time, then we send a revised agenda.
That's a really good idea. Typically, you can populate out blank events that don't have an agenda attached, and later, within your 48-hour deadline comes up, add the agenda to it, then, when you already know, looks at that calendar, you'll see April 1st is the public hearing, there's no agenda yet, obviously, but they know it's...
It's there.
On the homepage of this school committee dot Gloucester schools dot com, there's a list, so it might not be on the calendar, and there is April 1st.
See, the, the, as Joel said, the city, we have to post meetings, we have to post meetings 24, 48 hours before they happen with an agenda, and that gets posted at City Hall, and that's usually when the city clerk puts them on their calendar. They don't, they, you know, they are reluctant to post a meeting before they get the agenda.
That makes sense, I'm just wanting to make sure that one of the calendars, whether it's the Gloucester Schools calendar or the city calendar accurately reflects the schedule.
The schedule should be on the, of the school committee.
I'm sending a notice to Stephanie.
I'd love to use the, we have a Google calendar embedded in there, that's pretty as blank.
Wow.
Maria.
There is a calendar on the school committee tab on the school department website, so gloucesterschools.com, if you click on Administration and then School Committee. I was there, it wasn't, it wasn't accurate. So that's, I was referring to the city calendar.
All right, so I'll look at that tomorrow, because I'm the one who does that.
Oh, good.
So there are a number of things still in play on the calendar. But, and we'll have a discussion about, about which budget meetings should be, meetings of the whole committee adjusting that. And the difference between that is because, is that a, a subcommittee meeting, the, only the three members of the subcommittee can deliberate and ask questions, but anybody can attend. And generally speaking, they can, they, by being recognized by the chair, they can usually be allowed to ask questions, but they can't deliberate. So if we have a meeting of the whole committee, then they, they, everybody can weigh in on what they think about things, as opposed to just asking questions.
But also, if they get posted as a hall, we would need a quorum to be able to hold the meeting.
So we have to have four people show up.
Yep.
Okay. So, there's that. But we'll go over all of that on the policy, protocols, and procedures. So, going back to the agenda, action items, we don't have any subcommittee reports, do we? Action items. We have the approval of the subcommittee assignments, which we've been working on for the last couple of weeks, and there they are. They, the ones, technically, the ones, all that has to be approved by the, the school committee are the sub, the actual subcommittee, the three subcommittees. But, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the subcommittee assignments as presented.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? Any complaints? Anybody want to? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. We have, we have a number of grants here. The first one is from the Italian consulate, and it's $1,400 to the Gloucester High School Italian language program.
So we took that, second.
Any discussion?
Only that grant that's really committed at the time.
Yeah.
It was?
It has gone down, way down over time. I think, as you said, it was $10,000, it went down to $5,000, and that's a $14,000.
It put you on that.
Is that why I'm Italian? Are you racist now?
No, but you're going to get grants.
I'll find out. I mean, I see a favaza on here too.
He's not as good as getting grants as you are.
I'll ask. Tusa Gallo, I think, is one of his teachers that was in charge. That's how they funded that class to begin with years ago, and that's why we took that favaza.
That's why we have to tell, because they were giving us a substantial...
We'll have to find out.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. We have three grants from Gloucester Education Foundation in a total amount of $28,250, and the first one is $11,700 for the theater productions at the elementary schools.
All three?
We can do all three. $6,550 for after-school music lessons, and $10,000 for the O'Malley Academy.
So move for approval. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I guess I just want to point out the $10,000 for O'Malley Academy. The grant, you don't want to explain this instead of me, I just want everybody to be aware that the grant that we receive diminishes every three years, so it was 100% to begin with, we're now at 85%.
Yeah, there's another, we're just coming to the end of the third year of second round, and it will decrease again next year.
It will decrease again.
But, that being said, the O'Malley Academy is, from all my understanding, phenomenally successful.
Very successful, and the students do a lot of fundraising to also help fill the rest.
To be thinking ahead to how we're going to match the, how we're going to fill that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Massachusetts School Building Authority project update.
What about, what about the, the second part of that G E F, $34,000? The letter that we have in the file from December 16th, there was 28,5, those three things, there was 34, wasn't there? Oh, they've, they've purchased and donated tools?
Yeah.
$20,000 in tools, $14,000 for a number of items of support, so we don't have to accept those?
We do have to accept those, I, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so you got them, isn't it?
We are using the tools?
I'm sorry, it was in the packet, but it's not on the agenda. So we'll just have to put that off. Okay, good catch. Massachusetts School Building Authority project update. Message to school building authority, project update. The, um, there's a building, um, committee meeting scheduled for a week from tomorrow, five o'clock, and it's going to be at East Gloucester School. What has happened? We, we reported out on, on being accepted into the, um, preferred schematic report, um, report.
Which brings us into schematic design.
Which brings us into schematic design. So, um, the architects are now working on the actual design of the building. At, um, at West Parish, we had a, a focus group of, um, talking about elements of design. And the, um, uh, the designers came back with some initial, um, designs. Suggestions, just thought of ideas. And, um, that will be presented to the full committee, um, next week. The, I had a discussion with the administration today. The Article ninety-seven, um, disposition request will go, um, into the mayor's report in two weeks, which means that it will be coming up for a vote. It'll go through the subcommittee, but then it'll be coming up for a vote. The first, um, city council meeting in February.
Just to, to...
Yeah, look.
Just to take back to your meeting, I don't know if the building committee has reviewed, um, what's going on over Manchester Essex. But they've managed to get the design, they have two rectangles, right? A rectangle and a slightly angled rectangle. The simplified design, you know, there's a good example of one going up, right next door. Be interested if the building committee, you know, would look at what they're doing in Manchester.
What you, I mean, I have a point.
My point is, the committee was showing to us when we were approving the site, and the, what the school was going to look like on the site was, you know, very complicated. So I'm being, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm, I'm hearing reports that there is leaks over at West Parish. And that the complaint is that if there weren't so many roof angles over here, it would be a lot easier to chase these down because they're so, this roof is so complex, et cetera, et cetera. And if you look at the Manchester Essex School, it's a very basic, like, rectangle and another rectangle kind of design that the building committee to consider.
Does the school committee have to approve the design? No?
Well, we have to prove the whole package.
Yeah.
We approve the whole pack. Well, when it gets submitted for the preferred schematic design, there'll be a vote at the school committee.
And when is the next meeting of the building committee?
Oh, no, so away from tomorrow. Away from tomorrow, five o'clock at East Gloucester. Um, we can, um, we can get an update, um, if you'd like, from the designers at our next meeting, or the first meeting in February, whichever you prefer.
Why don't you suggest that they get the, some of the design, and look at the design in Manchester and figure out why the design can't be the same, or explain that why they're not with this design, so you'll understand the two triangles versus, you know, it'd be better so you don't go back and forth, back and forth, and keep doing plan studies or, um...
Sure.
Site visits. I'm sure that they could go look at it and say, "Well, this is the reason why we're doing this, or we're not doing this," or whatever. An explanation of why.
Yeah, isn't Doran Whittier the architect, the project manager on that job?
Yes, I'm sure he can get it.
In Manchester?
I think, I thought they were on that project.
I believe so.
Meaning, meaning they would know.
Yes.
Do we have the reports of leaks in Manchester, or not?
Well, is that...
Well, Manchester, first of all, there's just, you know, you know, Manchester is a different project. There's a different project in that they're, 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 it's a renovation, it's an addition renovation opposed to new construction. So it's a little bit different, but that's, that's, certainly, we can ask any questions.
Yeah, it's interesting to see a very basic, you know, simple, you know, school.
Something Soviet.
Okay, um, but other than that, there's not much else to talk, not, not much has happened since our last meeting.
When did you say the vote, the city council's going to be February first?
No, it's going to be the first school council meeting in February, which the mayor says is the eleventh. I asked that today, and I didn't get a clear answer. It, it may go through P and D because there's property, land involved, or it may go through all eight as a state, a request to the state. It may go through both.
I asked what subcommittee it would go through on the city council, the Article ninety-seven, and...
And I said, I asked that question today, and it was not clear. They, it would probably go, it may go through P and D because there's land involved, or it may go through...
Most likely to have a joint committee meeting.
Yeah.
Usually they do that.
Not clear, but that's the subcommittee.
So when it goes in front of the city council on the eleventh, then it'll be referred over. At that time, they, they might ask, saying, "Well, since I'm Chair of P and D, or since I'm BNF, we'd like to, instead of doing two different presentations, let's do one," and they might combine it. They've done that before. We've done it when I was the city council. I don't know how this one's going to react since it's their first time. I can't...
Well, my understanding is that would go in the, um, mayor's report two weeks from today, which would put it in front of the council, the last meeting, which then it would get, in, in January, and it would get referred to subcommittees, and then it would come back for a vote, for a full meeting.
Wow, they already decided how they're going to vote without even having a meeting?
No.
If they're going to look at it in January, and the first thing is in February, how they're going to have a meeting?
I'm just talking about the, the timeframe, I'm not talking about...
Oh, yeah, well, don't get your hopes up too high that it's going to happen February eleventh.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just repeating what I told you.
Well, I'm just telling you, they have, people have a right to go, they're going to have meetings, and, you know, especially if they do joint meeting. I mean, I don't know how they're going to do it, it's each chair how they want to do it. If they have separate meetings, then each one has to have their own meeting, and it depends when they follow when they do it. And then they have to bring their, um, decisions to the full city council, and then it'll be a public hearing.
Okay. That was not, uh...
Well, actually, it's all about petition. Well, yeah, well, it might not go to, it depends.
All I'm saying is, I, I, I repeated pretty much everything.
Right, exactly, but the fact is, I'm just telling you, you knew how the council was supposedly supposed to work.
Okay, well... But...
Yeah, almost like, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, it's going to have to go in front of the council, and so they're going to have to... And it might be quick, I don't know. Don't know how they...
It's, it's in the city's...
Yeah.
It's, it's, we've done, we've asked for it, and that was our only, only part in it. Superintendent search update. We will be, as I said, having a personnel...
And just for the record, so people don't think we're hiding anything, we've gotten, I've gotten emails, which I refer to emails, how when's this going to go in front of city council, when's this going to happen? Haven't answered because we didn't have a date, and so today you didn't, we just met for the first time, so you're hearing it. So, you'll know. It's not like, it's not, it's not that we don't want, I don't, I don't want to answer emails, or I don't know, et cetera, until...
There's no date scheduled yet?
No, there hasn't been, it's just now going to go to mayor's report. Now, the mayor's report is happening now, and it goes to the next one. Our next city council is Tuesday, the fourteenth. It won't go into this one.
No, it's going into the next mayor's report.
Right, so that's not...
That's the only date that's for sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so you're...
Actually, February month.
So, January twenty-eighth is, is the fourth Tuesday of the month, that'll be a full city council. It gets referred out to subcommittees. Subcommittees typically meet on the first and third weeks of the month. Theoretically, they potentially could hit the BNF, nor P and D agendas first week in February. So there may be meetings that week in subcommittee.
I have Doran Whittier, I have John, Doran Whittier, and it's going to be January twenty-first to January twenty-eighth.
They don't follow that. They don't drive that ship.
So, so I would look for, I would look for, I would look for agendas for the first week in February for subcommittees. If you're looking at ten, I'd look for first week in February, subcommittee agendas, look, look there, right? And then if...
And I'll say to a joint.
Right, which they may move into the third week. And then if there is action out of those committees, the soonest it would be, would be the second week in February, which will be first full council meeting. However, in the likelihood that this takes more than one subcommittee meeting, then you'd see subcommittee first week of the month, subcommittee third week of the month. Then if action came out of that second round of subcommittees, you'd be on the fourth Tuesday of February. Back up to the city council for the...
They won't submit it until the twenty-third. Because we do the mayor's report, we have the city council on the fourteenth of January, then we get everything ready the following week, and then we submit it before the, we have to submit it before Thursday, three o'clock.
And then the city council will figure out how they're going to do a subcommittee.
On the twenty-eighth, where they have their meeting, then we refer it out, and their city council meeting's not until the eleventh. So in the meantime, that bi-week, let's say, February third to whatever, it could already be into one of the, either joint, or whenever, P and D's Thursday, budget finance Wednesday, vice versa.
So in the meeting, it comes out of the mayor's report, you'll know, get an idea of what the time is going to be. I think this will all be put up on the website, at least forty-eight hours.
It has to. Thank you.
Superintendent search, as I stated earlier, personnel's meeting next, um, Wednesday at five-thirty with Dorothy Presser from MASC. And the things they'll be talking about will be a survey, a, um, job description, um, focus groups, and then there's, they'll also need to be a sort of a brochure about Gloucester produced. And, um, I think that's the, those are the next steps.
Who's on the, uh, actual committee after? How does that get decided?
Well, that's what they're going to talk about at the, at the personnel subcommittee, and then we'll bring it back to the full committee the next week for approval.
Can someone, how do you suggest I like to have someone from my administration on that team?
Um, I think that would probably be a given, that it'd be, um, the, the... But, but what we'll talk about probably is, first of all, whether, whether there's going to be school committee members or not on, on the search group. The second thing they'll talk about is, is the slots that you want to fill, you know. I mean, somebody from the city administration, somebody, you know, parents, um, community members, people from, um, organizations that interact with the...
I'm not rushing through this, and we're, we're going to, okay, because, you know, I, I...
So I'm just saying, that's...
Some people have meetings and discussion and concerns and...
So the first meeting will be next Wednesday, they'll talk about this. They'll come back with some recommendations to the full committee on, on the following meeting. And, uh, we'll discuss it there, and what we feel we can move forward with and vote on, we'll do.
Now, this person was coming to suggest this, are they going to be talking to people in the community?
They will run the focus groups.
Well, the focus group, can they make sure that my border health is involved?
I think there would be, one of the, one of the things that they suggested would be city, they'd be city administration.
My border health, where they work closely with the schools.
Yeah, but DPW needs to be there.
It's going to be surveys, too.
Police, police and fire need to be there.
I just want to make sure that we all have, like, a vocal point, there's not a rush, we're not going crazy, no offense to Sapphire, that, you know, we're not pushing them out, we're not pushing them in, we're just, we love them, but, um, it's great that he's going to retire and not hear about bullshit all the time, um, and, oh, right. But the fact is, I don't care, but the fact is, um, I don't want to rush into something because we're free.
So we have six months, and it's a good timeline. It gives us time to pause and reflect, and a lot of things will be going on.
There's a lot of changes happening, there's a lot of department heads that are going to be going pretty soon.
Yeah.
A lot of changes happening.
I have a, um, this is their suggested timeline that they presented at the personnel subcommittee meeting.
Twenty-twenty.
And, um, you know, they want to be doing focus groups and an online survey in February. They want to report out on those focus groups at the end of February. Uh, then they want to start advertising, um, in the first of, of March.
Perfect.
And, uh, you know, it's not...
And let's just say, so people know that, okay, so, and the March, we're looking, you know, people, in the summer's hot, because I'm going to be truthful, there's a lot of people out there, talking to the mayor, superintendents, what's going on. Because I think we're all sharing each other some superintendent, uh, human resources, the whole thing. It's like a, it's like a, every three years, everyone goes, we all just go back and forth. Um, and so, let's just say that we still haven't found anyone, and we're in July and August, and September's coming.
So, well, now by June, whether there are any candidates? Well, no mayor June if there's any candidates that we want, and if we don't, we'll have to make a decision whether we hire someone, or go with an interim, and then start over. So there's a plan for the plan not working.
Oh, so you mean acting, like they used to call me acting?
Well, yeah. It's an interim, it's someone that comes in, but then leaves, not acting. Acting can stay.
Ah, yeah.
Interim leaves.
That's what you think, you should call me acting.
Not really.
You stay.
Still acting.
Okay, um, I just, anything more on superintendent search? Okay, um, preschool location, um, is, we're in a lease now. We will probably, um, continue in that lease at least till next year.
So, this, well, I appreciate that you keep this on the, the agenda every meeting, we have something.
Yeah.
But for months now, it's been, we have a lease, we're negotiating the purchase. I mean, we got to get more details.
Okay, well, for starters, there's very little to negotiate, because in the lease, there's a, a set price for the building.
Sure, but like...
And so I think it's more a question of timing, of when, um, when they feel that it's the appropriate time to go and borrow the money to buy a building.
At some point prior to that, the school committee needs to offer, you know, because, you know, we don't do the, the capital side, but we do the, you know, the, the saying where students are going to be taught. And one of the issues here is that there needs to be a relocation of administrative offices, because there's a lack of space here currently for the demand for use here, right? And so shouldn't we at some point, if this is like, if, you know, if the way the committee are into the city buying this, and this becoming the permanent preschool, don't we as a committee need to figure out where we're putting admin and approve this becoming the permanent preschool?
I would say so, yes, okay. So I think the way you would start that process, it would be to, um, do an investigation, perhaps with a professional, on relocating the administration. Right? So we'll have BNF looking at that, and we'll refer that to BNF and, uh, see if they can, how they want to proceed. And come back with recommendations.
We also don't forget, I, I mean, in, in all fairness, I mean, I think you're jumping the gun. We're going to do the two schools first, and yet you're looking for administration, now you're looking to buy a building. Um, you need to slow it down, um, we have the price locked in, and we have options to part, uh, the lease year by year. I've talked to Mr. Lafada, because before all this would happen, I was willing to buy the building, and because we looked at all options, should we do a mainly our own schools, a high school, and what we could do, and what it would cost, and the four million here, and the four million there, what was best. You could expand up the whole thing. But I think right now, let, my, in my opinion, we should see what we're doing with the two schools, and what we're going to do now, and figure out then our next step, because in all fairness, things change, education changes, programs changes. I mean, I, uh, we have also, um, the Y O C A is going to be doing preschool, we're going to lose children. We've got a lot of things to talk about as far as our preschools, and what's going to happen, and what's best for the needs for our children. Um, and I know we have a lot of special needs children that we need to handle, and we want to make sure that this is the perfect place, et cetera. So I, I really suggest, as your mayor, that, um, we slow it down, because we're not going to be thrown out. We have giddy eruption, making, you know, I, I talked to Mr. Lafada, we're not going anywhere. I understand where you want to put in the budget, what we need to do. But don't forget, too, we also need to consider, too, the price of swing space, if you do build those two schools. That's another rental, okay, St. Anthony, wherever it may be, you're talking about swing space, rental stuff. So let's, before we...
So, what I'm...
Just because you have free cash and surplus, let's not go crazy.
No, no, please, trust me, I don't, I wish we wouldn't buy this building, but I don't, but we're going to. What I'm saying is, um, if we don't, so we have, we have three-year lease with two one-year, only two one-year options. I think we're, are we, we start year three in August, or do we just start year three this past August?
We start up year three in August.
In August coming.
So this is the second, we're in the second year.
We finished one full year, we're halfway into the second year here. So if we, you know, again, if we pump the brakes here, and then we get through year three, and we start going into our two-year renewals, if, if we just, if we don't buy this building, those two year, those two one-year renewals are the only time we're going to have to get... year, those two one-year renewals are the only time we're gonna have to get the other solution, right? This is not like a.
Well, you're going in front of the city council with this, the vote with the two schools, then you're going in this, let's work on one project at a time, I really think we need to work on a project at a time, you're gonna be overwhelming people in the community because you're, you're really, really saying to people, you're asking people to do a daddy solution, and then all of a sudden talk about buying another school, and then you're talking about a swing space, you're talking about, okay, $500 million or whatever, we need to just breathe right now.
Then we can not talk about it and then we can.
No, no, you, we, we all know, we all know that we need it, I've been talking to Mr. Lafada, you asked me the last time, it's not like I'm deaf ears, you asked me the same exact thing the last time, and we told you we had, don't rush, we have a three-year with the one-year, and I called him, and right now, it's not beneficial for him to sell it to us right now anyways, so it's not like I'm not talking to people, failing it, Jim and I have been going to the schools, we talked about Head Start, we met with Dr. Sapphire, what program, pathways, can they build, whatever, we're looking at the best way to fit, to spend the taxpayers' money efficiently, and to also think about if you do, let's say, we don't have a swing space, or you decided to one school, we need to really.
Sure, but the last thing is, this industrial park is full, and there are several businesses looking to expand in this.
They can't, we have a lease and they can't, and I know they wanna expand and it's locked in their price, so, you know what, he either sells, or he doesn't, if he doesn't, we sue, because we have that option to buy first at that price. I've already talked.
I have one quick question about that, is the need to move administration imminent? Like, do we need the space right now for the, no, okay, okay, so, so the.
Well, that's, I mean, that seems, we're gonna, we're gonna report to see the act of this now, it's easier anymore.
We have moved the IT department out to the high school, they were here, so, and because the, and that has satisfied the immediate need for, for expanded space in the preschool, and as far as I know, we haven't heard of any big increases of population of preschool this year. It's pretty steep.
Yeah.
So it may, one of, one of the, oh, we, there's an issue we always have with preschools because they, kids become eligible to come to the preschool by their age, so you get kids all year long, because they, they, they hit the, the three-year-old and, and, and they enter at that point out of, out of. Yeah. So, 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 it generally, but they don't enter, but they all enter kindergarten at the same time, so, so there is this, this, over the course of the year, we generally get an increase of population here, but I haven't heard of any critical mass this year.
And I think it's a worthy discussion, you know, when the Y does open, it's going to be a huge, huge increase in preschool, age kids, so it, I think it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, the thing you have to keep in mind is that the students that we educate here are all on IP's. No, no, that we have to educate.
Oh, right, right, right.
We have to educate those, the guideline is that they, that we need 50% of our population to be students not on IP's, okay? So we're not gonna lose the kids on IP's.
Right.
The danger is that we lose some of our role model students, now, the, the way that we have always kept that population up is by making it very inexpensive.
Which is at a cost, which we have to all figure it in, so, you know, we have to, we have to discuss that, and right now, personally, as your mayor, and, and I'm saying that, it's not at this time, I have to worry about right now what's happening. I've talked to, I, I heard your message, I talked to him, it's getting there, but it's not there.
I heard Tim Flaherty say that his preschool capacity would be around 75, anybody else hear this when he was here?
Seven, yeah.
He did say something.
And that would also include infants as well, like the daycare center, so, you know, if we go from 160 kids to 130 kids, it's still that big preschool.
Right, but you said we'd be able to hold it, you wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to sit there, but where are we gonna put the administration?
It's tied by the manager.
Yeah, we'll go to Sweets.
Okay.
Well, we're still renting city space for the cater, for government space, I mean.
Tight here, and it works.
I, I have accountability, I have to answer to this, where are we gonna put our high staff? We're, we're expanding, but we have no place to go and.
We share bathroom ground.
Let's not talk motion bathrooms, I don't have one, so, okay, I have to go downstairs with everyone else.
Okay, are we, are we afraid to let this go for a week? All right, we have two letters, one from a Reginald Santos and is in opposition to the building of the school at the Veterans site, and we have another one from Cynthia Bedoli, just briefly talking about the, thanking the students and, and the high school for the League of Women Voters Gun Forum, which is, as you said, unfortunately was the same time as Dave Harris and Judge Harrison's memorial service, so a lot of people were torn, but I, I attended the gun forum, and I would just like to say that it was very informative and very well-run.
Was it recorded? Did we record anything like that? Have you recorded it?
So you can watch it on Studio 1623, right? First, the other one, 1623 Studios? I got most of it, right? Okay, is there any other, uh, new business or?
I just wanted to refer to personnel, the stipend position regarding the communications to get a report on what's going on with those positions and what work's being done, or maybe not, and also.
Van driver.
The van dri, yeah, the van driver job description for Teamsters.
Did you say van driver?
The van driver job description, the new position.
There's a new physician that we're adding to the bus drivers. There are a couple things that, Laura, you wanted to refer something to. You can't access, you know, you want me to remind you?
Location.
Yeah, you wanted to talk, I said we could just talk about that on the new business. There's been a suggestion from Laura that we, on occasion, or old school committee meetings out in the schools, and.
The schools and or, and or at City Hall?
And or City Hall, City Hall, we used to be at City Hall, and I'm pretty sure when we left, they filled that time slot.
No, there's no one at seven.
Was nobody there Wednesday nights?
Their concom is, we're second and fourth, right? Concom's first and third. Yeah, that's where, it's wherever they're, you know, well, Laura does it, right?
My, my suggestion is that we, yeah, we made, so my, my suggestion is that we make these meetings more accessible to people by taking it out of this building and taking it to the schools and potentially to City Hall, which is also easier for people to get to, for many people, so that's the suggestion, I understand we'd have to come up with a calendar, and we'd have to post, you know, all understood, but that's the thing I wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly support anything we do out of this, this room.
Well. Well, next week, we're going to have a building committee meeting at East Gloucester School, and our intention is to have the next one at Veterans, so that might be a, a model for.
So those are the school building committee meetings?
Yeah, the school building committee meetings, but it would, it would, it would be an indication of what's involved, and, you know, because as I talked to Amy Pescarello, the principal at East Gloucester, about how we might do that, she said, well, we should meet in the library, the library's smaller than this, or you could sit on the stage and have people in the audience, those would be the two options, because the stage is currently being used, music room, so that's.
And is there technology, is there technology?
So, that's the thing about Kyra's, is Kyra's, they know the broadcast lines, the pre-recording, there's a dais right there with nine chairs.
David out of business.
I mean, the Gloucester High School library has, that worked well.
Gloucester High School library has been used.
I mean, it could be on a location basis, which locations are permissible to this, to having a meeting, I mean, it worked very well when we did it at the library, or when you did it, the library, a few months ago, so I, I don't know what the way is to, to proceed with this, do we come up with a schedule, or do we contact the principals, or?
I think we need to have a full discussion, I'll call about, I mean, there's consistency, there's all kinds of mortals conversation.
I would think that the thing to do would be to refer it to B and F and then come back at our next meeting for a full discussion.
Okay. But why go to a subcommittee when all of us are gonna weigh in on the issues?
Because that's the purpose of subcommittees, is to do sort of the, the groundwork and come up with a recommendation, I mean, why have subcommittees at all unless you're going to put a little bit of faith in them, that they're gonna come forward with some information, I mean.
It's not that you don't have faith, it's just this is a topic we're all gonna weigh in on with different ideas, and if you throw it to subcommittee, then you get the recommendation without all the input.
The subcommittee can find out what the.
Costs.
Well, if there's costs involved, as well as what the, the logistics are, and come back and say, well, this is what would have to happen if we went to Plum Cove, this is what would have to, and, and as opposed to having the whole committee sit here and, and say, well, gee, I don't know about what we'd do with a beam and, or, you know, I mean, that's the job.
No, you're looking at buildings, I get that part, I'm talking about other conversations, but we can have that after.
Well, that's why, that's why you send things to subcommittees, so they can do the work, okay? Anything else?
Plenty.
Okay, do we have a motion, oh, I got reprimanded by the city council after, after our, after the inaugurational meeting, is that after we voted to adjourn, we just got up and left, and I didn't officially adjourn the meeting, so, so I'm gonna turn when you leave. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Oh, say, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, the meeting is adjourned.